...and on the last council meeting or the one before that in late December, or excuse me, in early December about the town solicitors were looking at revising the resolution of the sewer subcommittee. It's coming before the town council tonight. And Mr. Solicitor, if you'd like to add any comments about how this came about.
Sure, I'll give a explanation of the reason for the resolution and the history of the sewer subcommittee. The sewer subcommittee is advisory to the town council. The town council is the final authority on all decisions having to do with the sewer system. And so the sewer subcommittee's role is purely advisory. So it was created by resolution many years ago, I believe back in 2004. And since, and the resolution then was correct. It had the correct number of people who they counted to be on the sewer subcommittee. And then when they went through the appointments for each of them, the number of appointments they had totaled up to the same number that they had created. Then they amended it a couple times, I think in 2008, 2009, and it got a little confusing because one of those resolutions, all of this is set forth in the resolution we have tonight. One of those resolutions said there were going to be nine members of the subcommittee, but it only appointed seven. So we know who the two, so in the interim, nine were appointed nonetheless, even though the resolution only provided for the appointment of seven. So all this resolution does is ratify the two people who I believe were appointed without actually having a place set out for them 10 years ago in the resolution that the council believed was correct that was incorrect. So this just now puts the number, it does the math correctly. It says there are nine, and there are nine. There are two members of the council. And then I can go through it if you want. There are five other members. I don't want to get the math wrong here. There are two members of the council, five members who are appointed from the public, and then two alternates. So that's nine. So we have the math right in this, in this resolution. And also it ratifies the appointment of two members who I think are the two who were sort of like orphaned by one of the resolutions that didn't really provide for their appointment, although their appointment was made. So all you're doing is ratifying their appointments and passing this, which now gives nine. And then the final thing is, we are, we are stating within the resolution exactly what the duties of the sewer subcommittee are. So anyone looking at this resolution will have the whole story and know everything about what this subcommittee is all about, what its history is, and then what its duties are. So I think there was one thing that the, there was one minor change that the town manager wanted me to make, which I made. It just said that the sewer subcommittee shall have access to town staff and so forth to assist, and that would have to go through the town manager. And that's the only, that's the only change to their duties, which is in clause A. The town council president had a suggestion to me when I sent from the draft that you're holding. It was to change one word, which I agreed with him on, I think it was in...
What section?
Section four.
Office of a member.
Yeah.
Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
It's the fourth section on page two.
So the third line from the bottom on fourth, I can send these, page 10 of the packet. So the...
The new one.
Sorry, the, yeah, that's the new one. It has one change in it, which I'm about to tell you about. It's the third, did I say the third line from the bottom?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Third line from the bottom of the fourth paragraph. That is the paragraph that says fourth in it. I changed it to, "In the event of a vacancy occurring of any member for any reason," I can't remember what it said before, but...
In the office of a member.
Yeah, in the office of a member. So this just clarifies it. It was the president's preference, and I think it's a little more efficient in stating it. Then the vacancy will be filled in the same manner as their original appointment and so forth. That's it. This clarifies the membership. You're going to ratify those two people, and that's it.
Okay. I just have one other question. I don't know if it was asked of you today.
Oh, one other change I made, excuse me. I thought it was important that this committee have, so we know where there are enough people there, that we establish what a quorum is for a meeting. A quorum is five. And no motion can carry unless, unless there are, no fewer than three. I don't think you want to have sewer policy being made by fewer than three carrying a motion.
My question, Mr. Counsel, is that, again, with the number five members, there's only seven that can vote. Seven, seven that can vote. Did you ask that, Mr. Waters and Mr. Brown? Seven, seven can vote. Why would the quorum be five instead of four, which four would be the majority?
Okay, right. The town manager asked me that. Because...
That's my only question.
You can change it to four, but four, there's a much higher probability that you're going to have a deadlocked advisory board. Five was so that there wouldn't be a tie. That's it.
No, no, seven.
It's impossible to have a tie with five. It's possible to have a tie with four.
Yeah, but, I mean, the two council people, they can vote or not?
They can vote.
All right, that's seven voters.
Right, but if you only have, if you only have five...
Not everybody, sometimes there are meetings, I don't know this for a fact, but if they're...
All right, I just thought four would be the majority. Four would be the normal quorum out of seven. You know, it's four, three. But if five is what you want in the wording, that'll be what we go with.
Yeah, I just...
Five out of seven.
Five is a forum that can't have a tie vote.
Correct.
That's the only reason I did it.
Okay. That answers that one, then. Thank you for clarifying that for me. And the change of the wording is, again, to me, makes more sense than out of, in the office of a member. So we'll go with that one. And are there, any other questions?
Hi. I do. You know, I understand and I appreciate all the work in this, but in 2004, they established the sewer subcommittee. And it had in there two members from the town council, one member from the Economic Development Commission, and then one member from Coventry Conservation Commission, and then three qualified electors of the town. Now, from, we got all the way up to now, May 19th, 2008, and apparently they changed that for some reason, given the fact that we weren't following our own resolution by appointing members from the Economic Development and the Conservation Commission, given the fact that it one folded and the other folks did not want to get involved. Now, as I, you know, we've been struggling to get people on several of our boards and commissions. I would like to, I redlined, I did what you said before, and I added in. And I also noticed on all the other previous resolutions, it would always stay on top, be it resolved that the Coventry Town Council shall serve on the Coventry Sewer Commission, this resolution, it was not on there. But I also wanted to change the membership. Instead of going from nine, back down to seven. And I wanted to, if, shall I, what I was thinking and hoping, but I wanted to put, do you hear, I can, I can give it to you, Nick, I have a copy for you.
Sure.
Down on the bottom, right here. I did, whereas the Coventry Town Council hereby creates the Coventry Sewer Subcommittee consisting of seven members. The membership shall consist of the town finance director, town collect, town tax collector, town engineer, and town planning director, and three qualified electors of the town of Coventry to be appointed by the town council and serve two-year staggered terms. Whereas all members of, whereas all members of the sewer subcommittee shall require to follow the code of ethics set forth by the Rhode Island Ethics Commission, including the mandatory filing of the yearly financial statement of the Rhode Island Ethics Commission. Then I redlined the rest, redlined the rest. And then just regarding the quorum. And when it came to the duties of the sewer subcommittee, we had discussed this before, and I had asked for a copy of the, they have, they have set of policies and operations, but we haven't, we haven't received that yet. But the last page, I did redline and added, "Provide and present a written monthly report to the town manager and town council at a council meeting. A financial report of the sewer fund and any other matters concerning the sewer system and/or sewer fund." Thoughts?
Well, the, I mean, I'm just the attorney, I don't make the policy. But, and I was really just trying to reconcile some resolutions that didn't make any sense before, but I thought I understood what they wanted.
But I think that former town councils also weren't following the resolutions either. So given this and...
Well, they couldn't because two of the committees had been...
But I think that was, that was the reason why they, you know, they added the alternates and, but I mean...
But when they tried to, well, they never fixed the mistake they made, so they just perpetuated it in 2009. But anyway...
But I would like to discuss.
Sure. The proposal that people be required to follow the code of ethics, they have to anyway. That's, that is unavoidable, that's required by law anyway.
The sewer subcommittee does?
Absolutely.
They do?
Sure. Of course they do. That's, yeah, that's, they're an appointed board. Even if you're advisory, you have to follow the code of ethics.
Oh, okay. I didn't know, okay. Terrific.
Yep.
But...
So the rest of it...
You know, given, given the condition of our sewer program, and, you know, I just figured, I think going forward, if we have our finance director, our tax collector, our town engineer, and town planning director, I think that would be extremely important to have on.
Councilmember Bacon and council president should, if I may, that the council not take any action on the proposed resolution that was brought forth tonight, but to have Councilwoman Bacon send her suggestions to the rest of the council. You can send them to me, and I'll disperse them to the rest of the council.
Okay.
And to add this on to the agenda for the 12th, for further discussion. So the council can review the proposed changes of the sewer subcommittee and to make a decision after there's more time for review.
Thank you.
Mr. Schilling? Okay, thank you. The other, I had two questions also. On page 11 of 17, which is actually page three of the resolution, at the bottom, draft, one of the duties of the sewer subcommittee is draft requirements and a process for sewer, contractor licensure, and recommend it to the town for adoption. Can I ask, I've only been to maybe one or two, maybe one sewer subcommittee meeting. We don't have a solicitor sitting there like we do at planning and zoning. So drafting requirements in a process is that something that the sewer subcommittee is, and I don't mean to sound rude, but capable of doing without legal advice? Is that something they can, that they are capable of? I mean, it seems to me that if they're coming back to council or, you know, for adoption, we better make sure our teeth are crossed and ours are...
Generally speaking, because they're advisory, I review what they send to the council when they send it. But I don't, I don't usually attend a meeting and they've never...
No, but you do, you do review everything. So it wouldn't just come from them, it would go through the solicitor's office first?
Anything that is going to be presented to the council, and that, that duty that they have, that you just read, is something that would come to the council. I would review.
Okay.
Yes, of course.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
So it would be reviewed, but I don't, I wouldn't help draft it. I would review it once they draft it.
But if it wasn't correctly drafted, you would change it before we saw it? We could, we would know that you, it's past the legal requirements written correctly, and we don't have to...
I would hope I would, yes. I'm pretty sure I would.
Okay, because we need to, you know, the sewer subcommittee coming to us as the sewer commission is a pretty big responsibility. Obviously, we've been kind of led down the garden path a few times, maybe not had the right information. Not...
But you are the sewer commission.
Yes, we are, but...
You are the, every word and the final word.
Right. But I know more now about sewers than I ever thought I would. The other thing is, the last page, 12 of 17, which is on page four, they would advise the town manager and the council as to the availability of funds for expansion of sewer system and the means of securing such funding. I don't like that one.
I redlined it.
That one, I'm sorry, but sewer subcommittee, I know you did, but it's, I'm reading it. Okay. Good, right, 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 right. I'm, you know, the source, this is why I think the finance director needs to be the person. The bottom line, as we say, needs to have, this information would have to come from the finance director. Anything with funding, I mean, I think part of the problem that we've gotten into is we just haven't had the expert advice that we needed.
I don't think this takes place right now. I think, I think all the financial advice comes from the finance department. I vaguely recall...
Then that could come out of here, the redlining thing.
I vaguely recall shortly after I first started, and we did the presentation on the expansion.
Yes.
Mr. Tebow did present finances to the council at the time.
But I don't think this is in their purview to have anything to do with any sort of funding.
I'd like to just reiterate that it's true, the finance director does, we don't make decisions on the sewer subcommittee finances like that on a budget. It's the finance director that's, yeah, yeah. We don't make those decisions. It comes from the finance director, so it's not a big deal taking that out when, you know, anytime there's a, there's a finance question, he's definitely involved in it. No one's qualified.
But the, the engineers, you know, have come forward with certain things, you know, the grants, et cetera. They bring that in to make it forward. The finance director might not know, you know, know about the certain things, the grants, et cetera, that they're trying to, trying to also. That's all. With discussion, Mr. What?
But then it should all go through the finance department at some point.
Yeah, and approval, I would have the finance director add his, you know...
Maybe there should be a sign off by the finance department.
Yes. And the last thing is, I know I've mentioned before that I, and I agree with Mrs. Bacon, I don't think we need two members of the council on the sewer subcommittee. So I completely agree with that. I think we all sit here as the sewer committee, and the subcommittee, I think, should be not council people. And also, I think we should put in here that maybe on a bimonthly basis, they come to us and we give us a report.
Monthly.
Monthly? Okay, well, I don't know, you didn't, we didn't...
It's a volunteer committee.
Yeah, but this is a big issue.
I know it's just an important subject matter, but every month, I, would you consider, you know, every other month?
Not, not, not with how everything's going right now, but I think, you know, if we could have a written report from them, I mean, just submit it to the, if we had to, but I think we really need to understand what's going on with the sewer subcommittee and the finances, given the state we're in right now. I think it's, in my opinion, it's appropriate until we can get out of this mess.
I think what the motion has been made, no, the suggestion has been made to table it and go to the next meeting with us receiving some, you know, recommended amendments. I also want to, you know, have you, Mr. Solicitor, look this over again, because you brought it to us with good intentions to vote on tonight and to pass it, to clarify everything. All right? And I have some questions with, and it's not easy to get any council person that want to sit on the sewer subcommittee, but, you know, if you only have one, and that person, council person doesn't show, I think two might be the reason that, well, what if one doesn't go? You know, because everybody can't make every meeting every month. And I think two is a good representation, is 40% of the council. So thus being, they know what's going on, or they should know what's going on, when they bring their recommendations to the council versus putting it all on one council person. Things we can talk about, think about, but, you know, I just would like to see if this one come back as well, you know? So we can, you know, make recommendations, amendments, and hopefully vote on something sometime. Because I know we want to get it right, but this was to hopefully clarify the mess that we've had over the years, correct? So fine tune it and get it right, and we'll vote, you know, versus, you know, reinventing the wheel and, I don't know, finance director, again, sign off maybe, but I don't think the finance director wanted to be on the sewer subcommittee each time they meet, because, you know, he's got other duties.
It's, it's up to the council, you guys...
Right. Well, I'm just saying, there's a lot of thoughts on this process, and that's why we probably shouldn't vote on it tonight. But maybe we can look at it on February 12th, or Abe Lincoln has a busy day on February 12th.
Mr. President, I think Councilman Carlson has...
Yeah, okay, yes.
Because I wasn't here back in, back then. What's the thought behind actually even having a member of the council on the sewer subcommittee? Do we know why?
Well, I, just surmising. Okay, I wasn't there in 2004 when they created this. Were you on, were you on the council?
Bill Hall is the one pretty much who created it, because the sewer subcommittee generally was not in town, was created because he was the liaison that went to West Warwick. That's where the sub, you know, where the, it was, the West Warwick Sewer Subcommittee is where, where Mr. Hall would go to. Then they created it so he could bring it into town as opposed to being there. Exactly why the member was picked, I don't know, but there was always at least, you know, one councilman, and I think he just wanted two, to do whatever we want, actually.
What I would think, though, just, I'll get back to my surmise, okay?
Maybe what West Warwick has, I don't know, West Warwick, they have two council people on their subcommittee.
If you're asking, if the town council is asking a committee to advise them on something, it does make sense that at least a couple members of the council are on that advisory committee to help direct them on what the council needs to be advised on.
It's called skinning the game.
Yeah, well, something like that, but there's a...
Something like that. So you know what you're doing. Because otherwise, if they weren't, you'd be taking advice from a sewer subcommittee and then putting it to the five council that had never heard anything until they come forward, and then where's the credibility? I think the credibility is if you have a couple on to help guide and ask questions while they're there during their monthly meetings. I mean, I've only been on a few years back years ago, but I think that's the whole point, is it not? That we've got two members here. Do you render any advice? Excuse me, there's a lot of talking, and I'm the only one that's talking. Don't you render any advice that you're making? Right. I mean, is it valuable, or you think it could be done away with? If not, have your opinions next, next, next meeting.
It's all, it's all, it's all, who does the presentation, or the chairman?
He's the chairman, right.
Does the presentations, and we haven't really gotten reports from our council members who are on the sewers. I just think it's not as clean as it would be, but that's...
All right, three weeks.
Well, Mr. President, if I may, can we're able to send in suggestions?
Yeah.
I mean, just because Councilwoman Bacon made that out, I want to be able to have some input. We'll get copies out, we'll be able to send some suggestions in, whether we're for or against, and so on, so we'll be able to forward them to you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it is.
I think the committee should be similar to what we do with Kent County Water.
Yeah. It's a work in progress. We want to get it right, and everybody can send suggestions to Mr. Waters, and they'll be all sent out.
So we'll incorporate that, and I'll, I'll do my best to reject as to the rest, but I will come forward with a new resolution for next month.
Okay.
Mr. President, if I may, can I suggest we take a five-minute break to use the facilities and just...
Right over. Okay. Do we, do we need a motion to table, or just...
It's only, I don't think a motion was...
We didn't vote. No, there was no motion to vote.
It's just been discussed.
Okay. Discussion and/or action. So the discussion is, we'll move it to three weeks from now with any input coming in during that time to get out to the council people. Well, we got all this swearing in, and that basically it. I guess the five minutes is the cost, it's all go, five minutes.
Priorities.
Priorities. I apologize to those who are swearing in, I know, well, several reasons. Also, with the extra app now, but you're waiting to the very end to be sworn in, I appreciate it. Okay, that's all. Mr. McGee's back, and we will look at Mrs. Carlson. All right. Next on the agenda is number two, Mrs. Roy, appointing members to the juvenile hearing board. And I understand that if they're still here, there might be three here and just not Mr. Bernard tonight. Is that correct? Is it Mr. Mann?
Mr. Mann.
Uh, Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
And Mr. Kenny?
Point.
Okay, great, if you would be so kind to come forward while we do the honors of swearing...
Yeah.
Oh, that's true, we do. Okay.
Sorry.
Publicly, we have to vote.
It's like the Academy Awards.
Okay, do I have a motion to...
Still moved. Still moved.
A point, those four, including Mr. Jamie Bernard.
Second.
Motion made, and second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Now, if you would be so kind to come forward. If, can you be so kind as to come up here and just watch that step?
Sure.
Right in front of the council, I know they're going to want to shake your hands afterwards. Okay, if you would, all three of you, sir, raise your right hand, you solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful to the state, support the laws and constitution thereof, and that you will be well, will, will well and truly execute the duties and responsibilities as a member of the juvenile hearing board for the term which you were appointed or until another be engaged in your place, so have you got it?
I do.
Well, thank you very much for your service, and I, I know that the town will be there, and you won't be, you just won't. Okay, very good, congratulations, and again, we'd like to just stress how important the juvenile hearing board is, and again, volunteers to step up to serve our residents, we certainly appreciate it, and again, thank you. Next, F3, we have a resolution, Mrs. Lavoy, to appoint a member to the Tuxit River Authority. We had that all in front of us, and at this time, the individual that we interviewed was Mr. John Price, I believe is how you pronounce it. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Price, okay, and second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Uh, Mr. Price, are you here? Oh, all right, that's right. Very good. Be so kind. Thank you. Right hand, please. All right. All right. Do you solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful to the state, support the laws and constitution thereof, and that you will well and truly execute the duties and responsibilities as a member of the Tuxit River Authority for the term which you were appointed or until another be engaged in your place, so have you got it?
I do.
Thank you very much, congratulations. All right, Mrs. Lavoy, now, F4, getting to the bottom.
Approving the sewer tie-in for 790 Washington Street.
Okay, we have that in front of us, page fifteen of seventeen. Whereas after examining the application designs, plans, and all of the submitted documentation, the copy sewer subcommittee has recommended approval for a sewer tie-in application for 790 Washington Street, assessors plot forty-six, lot twenty-two.
Uh, Mr. President.
McGee, yes, you want to tell us the exact name of that?
We're going to have another council member about, uh, this is what, ninety-five percent of the work that we do on the sewer subcommittee, so when it comes to us, it's been approved, we've looked over plans, we've discussed it, and make sure that it was going to go with the plans that West Warwick has and us, so by the time it gets to us, we don't have the plans, none of us, most of us wouldn't know how to read the plans, you know, the ones that are involved in the construction field, so by the time it gets to us, it's already been approved by a sewer subcommittee. So, but I just want to point out, ninety percent of the work is, this is what we do is pool of tie-ins mostly.
Right, right, and this is the...
I think that's the old Ma's Pharmacy, remember years ago?
Yes.
I'm dating myself, but, yeah.
And it's a, it's a vendor, a business now, and refurbished furniture and something else. Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Uh, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You both know, aye is happening, okay. Thank you, and number five.
Resolution to extend indoor modify the sewer moratorium.
Okay, Mr. Waters?
The resolution that you have before you tonight replaces the, in part replaces the previous resolution that the town council passed back in October. We discussed it at the January eighth town council meeting about bringing a new resolution forward to extend the moratorium. Between the last council meeting and this council meeting and the drafting of this resolution, it was brought to my attention that there are a few households that would like to tie in.
Right.
That was the impetus for including those projects, but again, this is, the main thrust of this resolution is to extend the moratorium until June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, so the, that Centurion Cooperman can complete the audit and bring their results before the town council.
Okay, Mr. McGee, yep?
Yeah, as Solicitor, somebody described, we've had people say that, you know, we're not listening to them, we've done everything that the people have been asking, and this is another thing, you know, to extend the moratorium until it comes to, I think it's a good thing, the people, there are people that are interested in tying in, and they should have that right to tie in, so I am definitely for this, and I will, I will vote and make the motion to approve.
Okay, um, well, why don't you make the motion then first, and then we can discuss afterwards? You make, you make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so I have a second? Okay, discussion?
I, I have a question.
A question?
Um, I've read this several times, and seems to, there's some issues on here. Should this be two sep...
Mr. Solicitor?
After reading this, I'm wondering if this should be two separate resolutions, because I think we're mixing two separate and distinct issues, where we might want to do just a resolution for the moratorium and then put the other issues in a separate resolution? Because we're mixing in the Briar Point, Arnold Road, Sand Street Hazard as substantially complete, what has that got to do with the moratorium?
I believe there's a requirement in the, um, in the sewer plan or the sewer ordinance that the sewer line be deemed substantially complete before you tie in.
Right, but what's that got to do with the moratorium?
Right.
Moratorium is being an extension of the...
The, the practice of the town in the past has been to have the town council approve the sewer project as substantially complete. Substantially complete means the construction that the town has undertaken is completed. It does not mean that the, all the bills have been pa, have been approved for payment, that the, but everything that is in the ground is going to be in the ground, and that the line is ready to go live, is ready to be activated. So right now, we just have dry lines sitting in the ground. Substantially complete means that there is no further sewer line construction to be done.
And that's why I think it's a separate issue from the moratorium.
Correct.
Right, and...
Legally, I think that's two separate issues.
Well, it can be included in the same resolution, and it can interrupt me if I'm incorrectly.
Right.
The only reason that it's included, again, the only reason that it's included in this resolution is that there have been residents who have contacted town hall who would like to tie in. I saw this as an opportunity to insert that language into this resolution, have it discussed by the town council. The town council can keep it in the resolution or remove it from the resolution, if the town council as a body would like to create, have me create a separate resolution, that's not a problem. Again, that's a policy decision, it's up to the town council.
Because also then, in number four, it says the town manager is authorized to assess properties which connect to the sewer system in accordance with the sewer ordinance. In the past, whose job was it to authorize assessments?
So anytime, the, the practice of the town, I'm not aware of this, it being written anywhere, to my knowledge, this has never been written down, the town staff has always waited until the council deemed a line or project substantially complete before beginning assessments.
So is, but here you're saying you're going, well, you or whomever is the town manager...
So the town manager is, and everybody underneath me.
I think this is two separate issues, and I don't, and I don't think mixing a moratorium, which, and actually, it doesn't expire until the fifteenth of February, so we have the twelfth, we could separate these two resolu, these two resolutions, because it seems it would be very clean and easy just to extend the moratorium, and then the whole issue of substantially complete, which, that whole term is like, a little bit pregnant.
That just enables anybody to be able to tie into the, when they say substantially complete, meaning that a line could be operable and ready to, to use. I think you split hairs, I, I don't really, you know, it's just, extend a moratorium and, and, I mean, I don't think it's a big, big issue, I think we're gonna...
When the moratorium goes away, then the other part of the resolution would still be there as a separate resolution. Because the moratorium is going to end at some point.
Well, correct, and, and the council can extend the, the moratorium, or you can let the moratorium sunset if there's new legislation that the council would like to pass amended to the sewer ordinance. It's, it's whatever you as a body dictate the town manager to bring forward. If the town council, the reason this resolution is coming forward from, from the town manager is because I've heard from the majority of the town council that the survey, that the majority of the council feels that the survey is not...
Cost-effective?
Correct, and that the audit that we're having done will be more than cost-effective, and that we need to extend the moratorium further while the audit is being completed.
Right, but in, in the meantime, it also says residents wishing to connect...
Correct.
Wishing to, wishing to connect to the sewer system shall be allowed to do so, provided the abutting sewer on their street is substantially complete. I think that's mixing apples and oranges. I mean, that's just the way I read it, that you have your, your moratorium, and then you have the rest of it. Is that not make, does that make sense?
If, if, if the town council would like to remove those items from the resolution, the council can still pass the resolution as amended, you just make a motion to amend the resolution to modify those paragraphs or remove those paragraphs, and then...
Could I ask, our Solicitor, is there any reason not to pass it as is? I mean, you know, I know it's moratoriums going, I know people that want to connect, if it's substantially, you know, room complete, they could, the town manager will review it.
Well, there is a moratorium on buildings.
Right, I knew, I knew.
But this resolution merely takes acknowledgement of one fact, and that does something about it, there are people who want to connect.
Right.
And, and that's, that's a good thing.
Yes, very good thing.
We had a roomful of people who didn't want to connect, and we imposed the moratorium for buildings, so we didn't build any more sewers until we knew that there were people who wanted to connect. Now, notwithstanding that, of the sewers that we built, there are some people who want to connect now. Why do you want not to have them connect?
I didn't say don't, I said just make it two separate.
Oh, but I, well, okay, with all due respect, I, I think...
Am I being too picky?
I think so, yeah. I don't see any harm, I really don't, I don't see any harm in just putting in this resolution just for efficiency, to say that if people want to connect, they can, and they'll be assessed pursuant to the sewer ordinance. That's all it says.
But that's, but that's... I agree with that, if they want to, if anybody wants to connect, that's fine, nothing new is happening, but the moratorium and a connection issue, two different things.
The two separate, and I, I agree with Councilman Carlson on this, but I also, regarding the substantially complete, back on October tenth, two thousand seventeen, Weston and Stampson wanted to have a project substantially complete. I asked for all the documents that are required, the certificate, any, and I can read what is required to deem a project substantially complete. They never provided those documents, they never provided the, this progress schedule as I requested. Now, we have change orders that are also pending with DM or construction. If we deem these now substantially complete, that means those change orders are going through. So we tried to pass those on ten twenty-three and eleven fourteen. Um, you know, I believe these are two separate, I mean, this is a great thing, extending the sewer moratorium, but then everything else, I mean, I, I'm sorry, I just, this is like pork barreling here, we have a really good thing extended the moratorium, and now we've got this down here, and I, is this going to conflict with our ordinance regarding the mandatory hookup? I mean, we're going to go and send out an assessment to just one person on the street? How are you going to do this assessment? What happens if, say, and I'm just going to pick Briar Point F, now, one person wants to go and hook up on Briar Point, and only one person, or maybe two people on Arnold Road, how are you going to do this? And what happens? Because I, I mean, all these meetings for the last, what, six months or so, I haven't heard one person come forward on either of these roads, Arnold, Briar Point, Sand Street, or Hazard Street, saying, please, I need sewers, I, I, you need to go and hook up. All I've heard is opposition, I've never had anyone reach out. So I don't know how we can go where the statement is, whereas the town council recognizes that there are residents who want to connect. I don't know how, because I've never heard of any.
If, if I may, uh...
Mr. Waters?
We, the council just approved an individual property to tie in, so it'd be the same process. If, if there's an individual property that wants to tie in and pay off their assessment, they can. That's, it'd be, it'd go before the sewer subcommittee with a recommendation from the sewer subcommittee to the town council.
But is this going to be in violation of our ordinance? We're just going to be certain, we're only assessing certain folks now that want it?
This is, this is our, this is, um...
Okay, so, I mean, because it says, once you send the assessments out, I mean, technically, if we send one assessment out, that means the assessments are going out, so what, I mean, are we in violation of our own ordinance?
No, if you would like to add language into the resolution to clarify that point, no assessments will go out other than individuals who come in and request a hookup.
So I, I guess...
For this project at this time.
Correct.
Due to the fact of the moratorium, that's why you're voting.
Yeah.
May I, may I just add, too, that we just received a letter from the Tai Oak Lake Association where they want sewers, and so they have...
I feel a lot of people are on the...
I mean, there's more people opposed to it, but...
But they're not, but that's...
Tai Oak Lake area is Briar Point, all the areas, so...
So they're all, they're all about the sewer line?
Yeah, I mean, not everybody.
These are all the folks that can hook up right now?
I, I believe they can, everybody is substantially complete, but I mean, there are people, my point is, there are people out there who do want it from the Tai Oak Lake area, you know, especially the association just sent us a letter saying that they, they definitely want it, and it is, I don't know the exact count, how many people want it, but there are people...
There's a lot of conversations here.
I did read that letter, but I, I think that these are two different, two different matter.
Can there just be one person at a time? Because it's confusing.
Yeah, banging down.
So the, the town solicitor pointed out in the last, very last, now before, now therefore hereby resolved, number four, it's only applicable to those properties who wish to connect.
Right.
Because the moratorium...
Because the moratorium and the town manager. You get the...
The moratorium.
Okay, I know, no, okay. All right, well, the compulsive, or the questions have been asked, are the suggestions, the questions. Um, if, if you have an extra question, go ahead. ahead.
I do, can we, if we're going to be deeming these substantially complete, I want to see the documentation, I want to see the, I mean, we're supposed to be receiving the, um, where was it, uh, the certificate, they're supposed to issue a certificate of substantial completion, why can't we see these documents?
I have the, uh, documents in front of me.
You have.
I have letters from Weston Sampson that deems them substantially complete.
All of these projects, so you have.
I have Northern Arnold Road Sewer Project Contract A-A, uh, Southern Arnold Road Sewer Project Eight-B and, uh, Contract Eight-C, Hazard Street.
Okay, I, I mean, then can we take a break so we can review the documents?
Yeah.
So if I have any other questions or?
I have a problem.
It's up to.
I, I, I'm comfortable, you say you've got them? You're the town manager, you got them, all right, so I'll, yeah, and, uh, I'll entertain a motion to pass.
Before you got, got a motion in the second.
Second, do we have a second, Mr. McGee?
Yes.
So we have, hang on one second, hang on, so you have everything, so Dember was on time, Rock Hill, all of these, all of these were on time.
All of these projects have been completed.
And there's no punch left, left, and we don't know what else needs to be done, because that, is Hazard Street even paved, I mean, is that on there to be paved?
That's, that's not part of what substantially.
Substantially complete means.
Substantially complete means the line is ready to be, to start accepting.
So the testing is done, so final payment, they're going to be putting in, once we deem this, they have so X amount of days to put in there for their final payment.
Yes, I, I have.
So they're all going to get their final payments, we, the change orders are going through for all of them?
No, 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 only the lines are ready to be, uh, made live, the change orders will not be paid, I will not allow those change orders to be paid unless they are approved by the town council.
So what about final payment, I mean, how does, how's that going to work?
That, that is a separate issue, so substantially complete only means that the line is ready, is finished being constructed, is ready to be, to accept sewage.
And then the assessments will go out right away to those folks?
No, the assessments, once they.
They tie in.
Once a resident comes to the town and they want to tie in, they will go before the regular process, so they will go before the sewer subcommittee, they will then come up before the town council, the town council will vote to accept the tie-in, and then after the town council votes to accept the tie-in, then the assessments will begin.
So I have a question, um, what happens from now until, I don't know, June thirtieth, we have this moratorium, what happens if only, say, five people decide they want sewers? What is Plan B to start paying for that construction cost?
There is no way I is going.
Are you for it now?
Pay it where now? All right, uh, motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I, 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 I don't even know how to vote for this with a hearing from the finance director on what the assessments are going to be, I, I mean, what is Plan B if, what, what is Plan B going to be, I mean, I think these are very, very good questions we're asking, how are we going to pay for this? So I guess that's.
We take it as well.
He's ready to go home now.
Motion made and, motion made and.
Hang on, hang on, before, um.
A motion to adjourn.
Should anyone recuse themselves?
Yeah.
The volunteer has been.
Yes, we did.
Before we took. Should anybody recuse themselves of that vote?
Right.
Takes three to approve.
That's it.
Should anyone have recused themselves?
Show them.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Very good.
Very good.
You have to record what their votes are and they didn't get.
Mrs. Lavoy, you got the votes on that three?
Ladies do vote, kids do vote.
And they didn't vote.